Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 5th, 2016 special meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag. [Clerk] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Anderson?
Present.
Alderman Beatty?
Here.
Alderman Beer?
Madam Secretary, Alderman Beer is excused.
Thank you. Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Germain?
Here.
Alderman Genitazio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardiman?
Here.
Alderman Shaw?
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Fourteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum. At this time, the mayor has a presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Aldermen. Tonight, I'd like to invite up to the podium our state Senator Gail Slossberg and Betsy Nyland of the Get In Touch Foundation. Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, October is Breast Health Awareness Month, and Betsy Nyland is the president of the Get In Touch Foundation, one of Milford's terrific nonprofits that is now a worldwide organization founded and started by her mother, who we miss terribly, Mary Ann Wasselmilein. And in recognition of Breast Health Awareness Month, I do have a proclamation on behalf of the city of Milford, which reads, "Whereas the mission of the Get In Touch Foundation is to provide breast health initiatives that educate gals and guys of all ages how to get in touch with their bodies, information in each other in the crusade against breast cancer." And whereas, other than skin cancer, breast cancer is the most common cancer that women may face in their lifetime, and is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States. And whereas, October is recognized as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the Get In Touch Foundation chooses to honor October as National Breast Health Awareness Month, acknowledging the importance of breast self-examination. Most early detections of breast cancer are found through self-breast examinations. And whereas, the Get In Touch Foundation's goal is for our daughters to know their bodies well enough that they will be able to recognize any subtle changes and be comfortable enough to let someone know when they do. And whereas, the Get In Touch Girls Program and Daisy Wheels educate girls in grades five through twelve on the importance of and how to do a breast self-examination for life. Materials that explain the importance of breast self-examinations are packaged and sent to health educators nationwide. And whereas, individuals, schools, and businesses celebrate an awareness campaign through the Get In Touch Foundation to help defray the cost of the Get In Touch Girls Program and Daisy Wheels by wearing pink and donating a dollar on the 21st of October. Every dollar makes a difference in providing Daisy Wheels to schools for free. And whereas, the Get In Touch Girls Program and Daisy Wheels were initiated in Milford, Connecticut, and are now in all fifty states and thirty-four countries, together we are changing the world, one girl at a time. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Blake, Mayor of the City of Milford, on behalf of all of the citizens of Milford, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Health Awareness Month in the city of Milford.
Thank you so much for having me tonight and for this proclamation. I just want to thank the town of Milford, the city of Milford, for embracing our program from the start. From day one, Milford has been on board. Through the Get In Touch Foundation, we look to provide free breast health educational initiatives to girls all around the world. And I am proud to be stepping in my mom's shoes this year and carrying on that life-giving mission and legacy. A year ago, I stood here next to my mom as she received the proclamation, and she said, "I don't know if I'm going to be here next year, but my daughter will be here." So, walking up the stairs tonight, it was pretty surreal, thinking, wow, a year ago, things were really, really different. And it is sad that she's not here with us tonight physically, but I know she's here with us. And I'm excited to take on this role as president of the Get In Touch Foundation and carry on that legacy. So, thank you so much for your support with everything, especially in the last few months. They've been pretty difficult, but so many great things are happening with Get In Touch, and I'm proud to be from Milford. Thank you so much.
Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker will be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the Board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the Board can do so at this time.
Good evening. My name is Dan Berman. I live at 77 Palms Street. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Milford Recycling Task Force, and also, I would like to give some information that is new to the Board, and hopefully, it will get disseminated via the TV. So, for those listeners, if they happen to be around, I will scurry around for a piece of paper and a pencil, because I have some numbers to give to you. The city of Milford will be delivering to every household in Milford a 96-gallon garbage bin, the same size as your recycling bin, by October the 31st. A recycling sticker showing what items will be acceptable for recycling will arrive shortly after the 31st. It is urgent that those who do not want or need this large-size 96-gallon garbage bin need to call the city's hotline to state your preference for the smaller size of 48-gallon bin. The number is, excuse me, 203-701-4690, or you may email Public Works, newgarbagebagbins@ci.milford.ct.us. Be sure to give your name, street name, and number. These totes are so designed so they can automatically be picked up by the city's new trucks. They must be placed at the curb with the cover's hinged side facing the house. If you have received a new garbage bin before the 31st, and I believe many are being distributed at this time, you can still call and have it exchanged for the 48-gallon tote. It should be noted that your new bins cannot be used until the 31st of October. It should also be noted that there are items that are not acceptable for the garbage bin. For example, fabrics or clothing of any kind, batteries, they can be recycled at loaves, and/or metals. The main items acceptable for your garbage bin is kitchen waste, soiled cardboard, like the bottom of a pizza boxes; the top, if it's clean, can go in the recycle; and soiled paper, napkins, diapers, and plastic bags of all kinds, bags like bags from chips and popcorn, et cetera, and package packaging materials, all styrofoam items, and soiled food containers, be they plastic or aluminum foil. If you break glass or a bottle, it must be put in the garbage. After the garbage totes had been delivered, Public Works will pick up your empty garbage bins to be recycled. However, we would like to suggest that if you put holes in the bottom and along the side, some of the sides, you can use them for a compost bin, for your green kitchen waste and leaves. Come spring, you will then have soiled good as gold for your vegetables, while reducing your garbage weight and size. There are many additional items that can be recycled, such as shredded paper, be placed in a clean plastic, clear plastic bag, small metal items, and appliances such as old toasters, iron pots and pans, and aluminum foil, plastic toys, trays, cleaned plastic plates and utensils, for example. All items must be rinsed, and no plastic bags of any kind are allowed, only that clear plastic bag for your shredded paper. Our goal, if all things being equal, would be that you would be able to manage your garbage with a 48-gallon tote, and to increase your recycling, which in turn would reward us with reduced taxes. Just a quick review of the number for the hotline. It's 203-701-4690. In addition, if you would like to be on the mayor's alert messaging system, which may not necessarily always be weather-related, but important information deemed by the mayor, please call this number, 203-878-6762. Communications for news is not always easy to get disseminated to the public in virtual time, so check out the city's website, The Mirror, and any other source you can find. In the meantime, Jill Dionne is working to get the recycling fire on The Mirror's webpage. Thank you very much for this evening.
It's all right, Ann, don't worry. Good evening, I'm State Senator Gail Slossberg. Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the Board of Aldermen, it's a pleasure to be here before you this evening. I wanted to just give you a quick update, as I know that very shortly, you're going to be heading into your own budget cycle, and talking about the dollars and the challenges in front of you to make sure that all of our residents are well taken care of. So, I wanted to just share with you a little bit of what we've done in Hartford that's going to affect the budget here in Milford as you go into those discussions. So, I wanted to make sure that you knew that even in these difficult budget times, and in this last tough budget cycle, the budget that was passed in Hartford included an additional $1.6 million in this year to help keep our property taxes down. In addition to that, I serve as the Senate Chairman of the Education Committee. So, one of the areas that I oversee is school construction, and our school construction reimbursement rate was at 38%. It had just dropped precipitously down from 55% due to a change in our grand list, but as a result of the advocacy and being the chairman of the Education Committee, we were able to bump that reimbursement rate back up to 55%, which will be an additional $4 million coming back to the city over the next few years as a result of that reimbursement. I wanted to make sure that you knew that at the time when the budget was proposed, and Governor Malloy had tried to cut millions of dollars from all of our hospitals, including a cut that would have threatened Milford Hospital, whether it would have stayed open or not, we were able to restore that funding in the budget and ensure the continued vitality of Milford Hospital. We are continuing to fund our Small Business Express Program, which has supported the creation of many new jobs in Milford, especially in our manufacturing sector. I wanted to let you know that we recently had a great win with a law that I helped to write that allowed Milford to take back our emergency medical transport, which will improve response times for our residents, saving both residents and the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have ensured that the dollars to protect Milford's coastline went to Milford Projects, and Milford will be receiving and has received grants totaling nearly $9 million in order to harden the coastline, ensure that if our residents are again, our areas again, hit by a big hurricane, which we're hoping never, ever happens again, but that we will be in better position to address that, and that there will be less damage. Many of you have asked about Silver Sands and where we are with that. We continue to stand against the overdevelopment of Silver Sands State Park, against the Department of Environment and Energy Protections plans, and currently, there has been no money allocated for that construction project. I get calls on a regular basis about this, and I just want to let you know that there are no dollars allocated from the state to do this construction project at this time, and we will continue to fight that. In addition, we have supported the microgrid legislation that has secured an additional $2.9 million for power to Parsons, Harborside, our senior housing, and our senior center for emergency shelter and operations. And I think also something really important that doesn't get enough attention is there are additional dollars that we are continuing to fund for clean energy businesses that allow businesses like SolarCity, which is employing at least a hundred new people here in our community, we are continuing to fund those projects as well. So, even in the most difficult times, we're continuing to work hard to bring the dollars back to Milford, and I know there's been a lot of questions about it, and I wanted to make sure that you had the most accurate information. Again, I thank you, as always, for your time and for your service to our community. I do want to just make sure that everybody's aware of the Sikorsky Deal that we just agreed to. It went on a bipartisan basis. That deal is of great significance here in Milford in particular. It will keep 8,000 jobs in our area, but more than 500 of those jobs are Milford residents. In addition, we have the highest number of businesses in Milford that supply Sikorsky. We have 27 businesses in Milford that rely on Sikorsky, and if Sikorsky were to go someplace else, those 27 businesses and all those employees would be out of work. So, we're really excited about that, that deal that we just passed, and ensuring that Sikorsky is here for the long haul, for today, for tomorrow, and for future generations. And I would just add my congratulations to Betsy Nyland. I know she had to go, but if you think about her and the great incredible courage she has to stand in her mother's shoes, and I know you all knew her mom, as did I, an incredible woman, she's raised incredible kids, really proud of her, and I was proud to work with her and the Get In Touch Foundation to pass legislation that requires that all of our schools in their health curriculum teach breast self-examination. Milford's always been at the forefront for this, so we are ahead of the curve, but there are a lot of other communities that do need to get with the program, and thankfully, we've got Get In Touch Foundation to help that happen. So, thank you again for your service and for the opportunity to share with you. At any time after the meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions, as always. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kathy Mortimer. I live on James Street, 41 James Street, and I'm here to find out if you have any plans of the disposition of 3234 James Street, which has just been, was a house and is now demolished and is ready for grass. It is an open space issue. I am here with one of the adjacent neighbors to this property, and we would like to keep it open space. I know that there's a need to reduce the amount of libel, female libel properties, probably everywhere, but here in Connecticut, and this is one opportunity to jump on, to leave this open space. However, I know you need to pay for your new garbage trucks, so would you also consider that the property owners adjacent on either side of this property, and this is a double lot, perhaps decide on subdividing this property? So, with that, I would like to turn the mic over to one of the property owners, Jane Russo, who lives at 16 James Street, and hear her opinion on what she would like to see happen to this now vacant land.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I get nervous talking in front of people, so I'll be brief. My name is Jane Russo. I live at 40 James Street. I would be very interested in possibly subdividing the property, 3234 Street, and so that I would have more of a buffer of property between my house and the supposed house that could be built next to me. So, if you could at all just sit down and think about what you would like to do, I would be interested in owning half of that lot. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is John Mortimer. I'm Kathy's wife, husband, live at 41 James. My issue doesn't have to do with that property, but it does have to do with the density in the neighborhood, which is basically out of control. We need that open space, and we also need parking. During the summer and during holidays, there's cars parked all along East Broadway, which is a hazard. When you're pulling out of your side street, which James Street is a side street, you can't see what's coming. So, I would like you to consider developing some area for parking, just to alleviate that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on September 12, 2016.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Four.
I don't think we had a special meeting.
We did not have any special organizational meeting. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Report. I'd like to personally thank Betsy Nyland for coming here tonight, this evening, to continue her great mom's legacy, and to give all of the information that she did for that great foundation called the Get In Touch Foundation. And also, thank Senator Gail Slossberg for coming in there and giving us up to date for what's going on in Hartford. Agenda Item Number Six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is the report from the mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I respectfully request your consideration in action on those items listed in the agenda, Items 8A through Items 8G. If any questions arise, please feel free to ask either myself or the folks sitting to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Number Seven, we have no unfinished business. Agenda Item Number Eight, moving on to new business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the hereby request for the appointment of Michael Catanuno of 287 Buckingham Ave., Local 424, as an alternate member of the Pension and Retirement Board to fill the present vacancy, term expiring 12/31/18.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, will our newly confirmed commissioned member come to the front of the auditorium to get sworn in by our city clerk?
I need you to raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirming that you will uphold your duties and responsibility as a member of the Pension and Retirement Board for the city of Milford to help you guard under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached memorandum of understanding, mutual aid surge capacity, and public health preparedness between the Milford Health Department and West Haven Health Department, and to authorize the mayor and health director to take all steps necessary to effectuate said memorandum of understanding.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, do we have a similar understanding with the cities of Orange and Stratford?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Bevan, I know we have one with Stratford. We have our health director, Deepa Joseph, in the audience. She made a special trip here this evening. She may have some more specifics about the particular memorandum of understanding and the details in this, but it's my understanding that this is an identical agreement to what we have in place for other mutual aid agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But...
Good evening, everyone. We do have a similar agreement with the Stratford Health Department. We do not have a similar agreement with Orange, as Orange only has a part-time health department, so cannot serve in that capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the director or the appropriate person. I'm wondering, in the case of, first of all, I wanted to state that I was glad to see this arrangement between the two cities. It certainly makes sense. There are a number of health departments throughout the state of Connecticut that not only have mutual aid agreements, but they've actually found cause in joining together on multiple issues. And I think of Ledge Light and Quinnipiac, for example. I have a technical question, and that relates to, even though the directors are signatories to this document, what type of document indicates that this board is agreeing to the arrangement, and that it's duly authorized by the mayor of the city of West Haven, the mayor of Milford, and that it is recorded on the public record? So, Mr. Mayor, or the appropriate person to answer the question.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Anderson, and I'll let our city attorney fill in any gaps, but from a broad perspective, the resolution that this board presents is an official city document that is attested to by our city clerk. A similar resolution will be brought before the West Haven City Council. So, with those two resolutions, we are authorizing, or this board, this legislative body, is authorizing the director of this department, the two health directors, to execute this document. document.
It just, the mayor accurately stated that the resolution from this board is what will corroborate and affirm the agreement. I think this document, the agreement, is identical to the agreement that was brought before you with respect to the Stratford memorandum of understanding. And why I thought and recommended that it come before you is the last paragraph, not the wherefore paragraph, but the indemnification language, which indemnification is a potential future financial obligation, so it would need legislative approval before we entered it. No one knows what that number is, but it has the full weight of your blessing should you vote in favor of it.
Thank you both for that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Joseph. Good evening. Can you give us a little background information? We have an agreement in place already with Stratford. Can you give us an example of some of the resources that have been shared?
Sure. First of all, if there's a situation where even in a planned absence on my part by state statute, we're required to have coverage by another individual that carries a master's in public health. So we have utilized these agreements for that situation, but we've also utilized these agreements in public health-related emergencies. We used it during after Storm Sandy, as well as Irene. So while our sanitarians were out with FEMA doing the damage assessment teams, we had sanitarians from Stratford who were helping to get some of our restaurants back online while our sanitarians were otherwise occupied. So there's that example. And we also, during H1N1, we utilized some nurses from some of the neighboring departments in order to do some of our vaccination clinics as well.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you. Can you just tell us what prompted this agreement with West Haven? Obviously, we haven't had this in the past, and I'm just curious to know, you know, moving forward, can we expect this agreement with other surrounding towns as well?
A few things prompted it. We typically like to go by having multiple layers of backup, so having just Stratford in the official capacity with an official agreement, we felt it was important to also have additional backup if Stratford was unavailable. So there was that. We also, for years, have been working on public health emergency preparedness on sort of a regional basis. And many, many years ago, probably 10, I guess that's not many, many, but 10 or 11 years ago, we did have memorandum of understanding with multiple towns within our region. Those have since expired, so we've just discussed the idea of bringing those back as we know that there have been circumstances where we have needed to rely on each other's resources and share resources.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman, through you. You mentioned an expiration, and I noticed in this agreement, it's only good for three years. Do we, will we see this agreement before us when it does expire, or will it automatically renew itself?
The plain reading of this memorandum of understanding says that it remains in effect unless written notice is provided by either party.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached agreement between the City of Milford and the South Central Connecticut Regional Water Authority for the paving and/or resurfacing of Ardmore Road, and to authorize the mayor and public works director to take all steps necessary to effectuate said agreement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8D.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request authorizing the mayor, city attorney, and fire department chief to take all steps necessary, including signing all related documents, to effectuate an agreement for the provision of basic life support, ambulance, transportation, assistance, in conjunction with the attached resolution for qualifications.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8E.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached letter of intent between Green Point Energy LLC and the City of Milford for the installation of a fuel cell application at the city wastewater treatment facility located at 75 Deerwood Ave., and to authorize the mayor and public works director to take all steps necessary to effectuate said letter of intent, including signing all documents necessary to implement the installation of such fuel cell application.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to either the mayor, or I see the public works director back there. Can either one of you just kind of explain a little more detail about this program and the benefit to the city?
Sure. Again, the return on investments is outlined in the agenda packet, and a little overview is also outlined, but we do have John Carbone here from Green Point. Both he and the public works director have been working in concert to bring this project to a point where we're almost ready to start. They've done all the due diligence, applied for the state incentive grants, applied for the incentive grants through the United Illuminating Company, and brought to you a project that really will save the city a lot of money. It's an investment in our infrastructure, infrastructure that we would have to spend either bonded money or operating money in order to pay for, so this is really a benefit on many levels. And again, John Carbone and Chris Saley are here for a few more details about this project, but I do have to compliment both of them because they did bring us a project that is really a home run.
And just to follow up on there, Mr. Mayor, through you, Chairman, is there any guarantees? I see the numbers here, 2.4 million combined electric and cost savings and energy efficiencies. Any guarantees or anything that... There's a lot of numbers that could be a lot of questions. And also, another follow-up is a timeframe, when all this will happen and expected completion.
Sure, Alderman Germain. Just to give you a little background on it, we've been talking with a number of companies and looking at both treatment plants for both L-Rex and Z-Rex, which is low admissions or zero admissions. We had a number of companies submit applications to PURA. Mr. Carbone's company was one of the winning companies and the company that brought the best package to the city. The package that you're presently looking at was before we did a little bit more due diligence with the plant. The plant needs some upgrades, as the mayor has talked about, and part of this package is a guarantee of at least $500,000 of capital improvements to the plant in our digester capacity, which I don't want to get... I mean, the details is it's a sludge capacity that the city has at both plants, and this $500,000 will help with capital improvements that need to be done that have been put off for a number of years. The fuel cell is a 1.3 megawatt fuel cell. We presently, in the worst-case scenario, and that's why it's a little misleading in the pamphlet, worst-case scenario, we'll get $500,000 of capital improvement, and we'll get $50,000 a year in savings, and we'll have a guaranteed lock-in price. Now, people will say, where does the $600,000 come? We anticipate working with the UI and getting what we call virtual net metering, which will allow us a tremendous savings. Virtual net metering will allow us to, in other words, produce more energy at that one location and offset the costs at up to five other locations. But we first have to get this plant or this process moving, and we don't have a guarantee from the authorities, but we have a pretty good indication that they would look favorably down the road at virtual net metering. But even without virtual net metering, net metering, we would save $50,000 a year in energy costs. We get $500,000 a year, I mean, $500,000 in capital improvements, and we'd be locked in for our energy costs for 20 years at no expense to the city. We're purchasing the energy anyways, and it's a win-win for both the company and the City of Milford.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I have a... Would just like to say thank you to the public works director and also to the mayor for working this out and us being able to see this being accomplished. We've hoped for many years that this would come to fruition, and it finally has. And this will be a tremendous savings to our taxpayers, a new revenue stream that's not going to cost us anything. And I look forward for when we are able to move in the Husatonic wastewater treatment plant and be able to do something similar with that. So I thank you for moving this project forward and saving the city all this money. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. If I could give you a little background, too, this isn't the first project that we've worked with Mr. Carbone's company. We've done the Parsons upgrades, we've done the city hall upgrades, and we've done Fanny Beach upgrades. Fanny Beach, there was no capital outlay from the city, and we put two new boilers, condensing boilers in. The city hall, again, LED lights throughout the building and new boilers with no capital outlay to the city, just an offset on our energy costs. The biggest project was at Parsons, which we relamped the whole building with LEDs. We didn't have the opportunity to put a boiler in because we're going to be doing a microgrid over there, hopefully in the next year, so that we'll be getting heat from the microgrid. Presently, I believe, and Mr. Carbone can get into more details, I think we have a 25% or 24% energy savings at that building compared to previous use before this energy upgrade. The other part of it is, it gives our maintenance department control over the heating and cooling of the building, so they can do it actually from their laptop or phone. So it really gives us control over the building. So these are the projects that we've done, and also Mr. Carbone's company's worked with the Board of Ed on a number of projects. So we have familiarity with his company. And again, as I stated, I think it's a win-win for all parties.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Director Saley. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm also in favor of this proposal as well. I just have a question in regards to the energy that's generated. Is it all going to stay within the city, or does Green Point have the authority to sell excess energy that we're generating in this agreement?
I'm going to let Mr. Carbone speak about the actual energy generation component. My understanding, though, is if we get virtual net metering, we will use all the energy produced of it, but I'll let Mr. Carbone speak.
Thank you. I just want to be clear.
Good evening.
I know that this is to, is, the purpose is to utilize the energy for our existing infrastructure. I think there's five buildings and potentially one school was mentioned in conversation. I don't know if that's going to come to fruition or not, but my question is, if we get to a point where we're producing more energy than what we need, how does your, how does this agreement take place?
Well, the intent is to utilize the virtual net metering that Mr. Saley was discussing, where we'd be able to provide, generate electricity with the fuel cell that would be piped back into the grid, and we'd offset it against five other facilities to pretty much, you know, a direct offset. In the event we don't get virtual net metering, it would be a net metering proposal where the facility it's housed would be displaced and the remaining would be fed back to the grid, and the utility essentially would buy the power, the excess power. But the first scenario is what we want to achieve, and we feel pretty optimistic that that application will come through for us.
But how is the agreement written if it doesn't, if we don't achieve that first best-case scenario? Are you going to take our energy and sell it out in the grid?
That's what would happen, the excess. The host facility would be displaced 100%, so they'd be buying the clean power at a significant discount. That would represent the $50,000 in savings annually. In the event we could do the virtual net metering, then we could supply five other facilities, and that would be, you know, 100% of the power produced.
And what's going to dictate whether we can do the virtual net metering or not?
It's a good question. It's an application process right now. The process is administered through Eversource and United Illuminating, and they opened it up to the municipal sector only at this time, the virtual net metering. Right now, there's a backlog in the application process. They are working on this resolution to open it up because there was a huge response, and they weren't quite prepared for all the nuances that came with virtual net metering. So it's our, it's our understanding, what we're being told from the utility and the legislative folks, that it's very promising that within the next 12 months, they would open it up to this type of project.
And if it's not opened up, then we're not going to receive or realize the full benefit?
Correct. It would be, it would be a smaller-scale benefit to the city.
And if it is realized, are we going to have the opportunity to go over and above five buildings, or is the five buildings based on the contract?
It would be, well, the program is only up to five buildings, so we would do our best to match up five buildings to take 100% of the load being produced by the fuel cell.
And just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, when will we actually know? I mean, we're voting on this tonight, but when will we know if we're going to realize the best-case scenario in this agreement?
Well, at this, at this point in time, there's some engineering that is being done as we speak, and there's two application processes that have to happen. So there's an interconnect application that will be submitted within the next three weeks, and then shortly thereafter, there will be the virtual net metering application.
Is it fair to say this might be premature? Why wouldn't we want to wait the extra three weeks in order to really know if this is going to be a benefit?
Well, it's going to be a process. They're not going to make a decision on the application quickly, so it might take us all eight months to find out if the application's going to be accepted and that they're going to open it up to this project.
Okay, so to be clear, this is just the application process, and then once the application is submitted, then we'll get some feedback?
Yes, you will.
And I assume the board will be updated? Is that accurate?
We can provide you an update, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, and I guess Mr. Carbone, what are the projects in Connecticut or around that you've worked on that have been successful with this program?
Well, the virtual net metering just came into play within the last 18 months, and there are a handful of projects, municipalities that are participating in it. You know, a couple smaller scale, but there's one recently that came online with the Amity Regional District that was a similar-sized application. So they're coming, but they're letting them in slowly because they're trying to control the process. And as I indicated, they ran into a couple nuances because there was such a positive response of participants. So they're trying to open it up so that more and more towns and cities could participate with virtual net metering.
Okay, so nobody at this point has seen it through yet?
There's been a couple projects.
What towns?
The Amity Project was one.
That's complete?
Yes. It's coming online anytime now.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Carbone. If we get the virtual net metering and the best-case scenario, we're going to be using 100% of the fuel cell's capacity. Of those five sites, would they be getting 100% of their power through the fuel cell, or would they also be buying power from the electric company?
You know, we're going to do our best to match the loads, but it's our anticipation that, you know, probably four of them will be 100% of their load. You know, it's going to, we're, the fuel cell's going to produce approximately 10 million KWH annually, which is significant. And, you know, a lot of your facilities are relatively small, the 2, 3 million size, you know, with... you know, with Husatonic being one of the biggest facilities, biggest users in the city, and then jumping into some of the schools.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the actual power that's generated from this, from this fuel cell does not directly power, you know, other sites. It goes back to the grid, but we get, if this virtual net metering comes into play, we get credit at the actual amount for the generate, the power generated from the fuel cell.
It's a reconciliation process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request authorizing the mayor, the city attorney, and public works director to take all steps necessary, including signing all related documents, to effectuate an agreement between Greenpoint Energy LLC and the City of Milford for the installation and operation of a combined heat and power generator at the city's water treatment facility located at 75 Deerwood Ave.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatizio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Director Saley. So, Mr. Saley, just to be clear, this is the same concept, but a different fuel source? Is that accurate?
Yes. This is, this is going to be a fuel cell. It's going to be a 1.3 megawatt fuel cell that we'll be putting down at, I'm sorry, at the Pever plant on Deerwood Ave. So, it's the same project we just discussed.
Okay.
And if I could clear up, I just want to make sure the board understands, in our worst-case scenario, which is what we proposed, is the city's going to save $50,000 a year and have a fixed cost for energy and get $500,000 in capital. We believe that once the project is moving and running, there's going to be an opportunity for us to have a tremendous big, geez, my English, my mother will kill me, but just a bigger increase in savings. And it's interesting, going through the process, and I'd ask the board, what do you think, our biggest energy user is the Husatonic plant. What do you think our second-biggest user is? Streetlights. So, that's our second-biggest user in the city. And just to give you, we're working with the UI presently. The UI is looking to invest in LED lights through this city in 2018, so it's going to be hopefully a big savings to the city. I mean, most people look at streetlights and don't realize it, but it's something to see.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine. I'm sorry. I don't have an 8G here.
Are we going to reorder the agenda on this one?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, at this point, your board may consider reordering the agenda to take up Agenda Item 14A next, so that we can convene executive session and discuss 14A prior to dealing with 8G. But you do need a motion first to reorder the agenda, and then you need a motion to go into executive session.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Alderman Veccharelli. We need a motion at this point. I want to stand a motion to reorder the agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to reorder the agenda to come back to 8G and to move current to 14A in executive session.
You have a motion and a second to reorder the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So passed.
I guess we're going to have Ray McAluso, the city attorney and the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, you do need a motion to go into executive session. It needs to be approved by two-thirds, and if, before you vote on that motion, if you could announce those individuals who'll be joining us in executive session, which do include myself, city attorney John Berchem, our sewer consultant Ray McAluso, and attorney Jeff Donofia.
There are motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? For an executive session. He just, he just, he just announced it. All right, we are out of recess and back to Agenda Item 8G. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached allocation transfer number two, the Indian River Intercept replacement.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number nine. Since this is a special meeting, there is no new business. Item number 10, we have no budget memo transfers. Agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $44,174.40.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 12, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Alderman Frank Smith.
It's a library committee, a standing committee? Or it's a? Okay.
Any reports of any standing committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda item number 13, reports of special committees. Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mentioned it at the last meeting, just want to mention again, tomorrow night, we will have the unveiling of the WPA mural, which was restored, and we'll have an unveiling tomorrow at 6:30 at the library. Members of the Board of Aldermen are cordially invited to attend. Also, from the library, the Friends of the Library, which are an invaluable resource to the daily functioning of the Milford Public Library, are having their gala event on November 6, which is a dinner dance. It's $40 per person. It includes an open bar and food and entertainment. That'll be November 6, I believe it is. Is that right, Chairman? It's November 6?
I actually believe it's October 22. Is this the, referred to the night at the library?
October, yeah, yeah.
Yes, October 22.
Thank you. Alderman Grant is correct. It's actually October 22, but it's a very worthwhile cause. Tickets are going quickly, but I would encourage anyone interested, they can attend dressed as their favorite literary character or author. It's going to be a big, big deal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Alderman Smith. Are there any other reports of special committees? Seeing none, is there a motion? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I offer something to?
Alderman Vitale.
Through you, through the rest of the board, just some information. Tonight, we had our kickoff for United Way campaign at Subway, and it was really a success. Scott Burrell was our main speaker, and it was a great, and Heidi Voit, or I don't know her last name, but her maiden name was Heidi Voit, from NBC, little snippet on her experiences as a young child. And, but, but more importantly, I'd like to report that the Subway had given a gift to start our campaign of a $50,000 gift. So, that was tremendous on their part, and I'd like to thank them publicly for that. And it's quite, quite an honor to have them so involved this year. So, I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Meeting adjourned.